It's 10 o'clock, it's time for the council being in session. Ms. Goldberg, Mr. Holden, Ms. Siskowski, Mrs. Walters are here. We have five members present, we need five more for a quorum. It's 15 minutes after 10, and we have Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fuer, Ms. Goldberg, Mr. Holden, Ms. Pickle, Ms. Wax, Ms. Walters. We need one member for a forum. Mr. Burnson, I know you're here.
Um, call a roll.
Burnson, Chick, Fuer, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Siskowski, Ms. Pickle, Padilla, Ridley Thomas, 22 X, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, the council will please come to order. This is a meeting of the City Council for the City of Los Angeles on the 8th day of March, the year 2000. There are 15 council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel 35, and we're also being monitored by council phone. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Ms. Siskowski moves. Mr. Wax, second. If there's no objections, unanimous vote. The next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item number one, the hearing and ordinance should be continued to March 29th.
Okay, if there's no objections, that will be the order.
Item number two, applicant consents continuance to May 10th.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number three, Council District One has requested that be continued to April 7th.
Item three.
Yes, Mr. President.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number four, Councilman Fuer requests that be continued to April 14th.
Which one?
Item four.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number 22, Councilmember Fuer requests that be continued to, excuse me, refer to Budget and Finance Committee.
Is there any objections to referring that to Budget and Finance? Seeing none, that will be the order. Ms. Goldberg, do you want to, you want 20?
I'd like to refer item 21 to Personnel Committee.
Is there any objections to that? Seeing none, that will be the order.
Thank you.
Okay.
And item 24, the city attorney has advised that that can be withdrawn from calendar.
24 to be with?
24A.
24A? Okay, if there's no objections, that will be the order.
Item number 17 is confirmation of city official to the Employee Relations Board.
Okay, item 17, that's Joseph Gentili. We need a motion on this? Well, that is. We haven't done six yet. Any discussion on this appointment? If not, Mr. Hernandez's moves, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
You're approved, we want to thank you for serving the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item. Fourth worth on that.
Items for which public, excuse me, items noticed for public hearing. Item number five is public convenience or necessity.
We have item five before us now, is there any?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Walters.
I'm moving the item, I had objected to it in the past, based on its location and the crime in the area, but we consulted with the Police Department and found that only once in 25 years has there been trouble at that market specifically. I went and visited the market, visited with the owners, and they are anxious to comply with any conditions that we may require, and so I'm moving this item, that it go through.
Be approved?
Right.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, prepare the roll on Mrs. Walters' motion, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number six is a Planning and Land Use Management Committee report, is a public hearing.
We have an amendment on that, so we'll call it special. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through 16.
Seven through 16.
And item number 14 is submitted without recommendations, it needs a motion.
So we'll call that special. We do have some cards on 15, so we'll call that special. But any, any other special by council members? Seven through 16? If not, prepare the roll on seven through 16 with the exception of 14 and 15. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 18 through 23. And there's a substitute for 20.
Eight, anybody want to be heard? We have somebody that have, we have cards on 21, that's been, that's been sent to the committees, so let's just forget that. Uh... The 20 is called special. Anybody want to be heard on any of those items, other than, uh, on any of the items? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any special by council members? Any special by council members? Okay, we have 18, 19, 23. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items 24 and 25 are closed session items.
We'll leave those on the desk.
Item number 24A, Mr. President, that can be held in open sessions. Do you wish to hold that on the desk before you go into closed?
24A?
24A.
I thought you said to withdraw that.
No, I'm sorry.
Huh?
I'm sorry, 25A.
Huh?
25A. I'm sorry, 25A.
25A, okay. Okay. But 24A should, huh?
That was withdrawn.
Withdrawn. Okay. Okay, the next item.
Item 20, on the continued?
Could we have some quiet in the council chamber, please? Next item.
On the continued agenda, item number 26 is notice for public hearing.
Does anybody want to be heard on 26? Mr. Pub, um, Sergeant, would you get that card? What is your name?
Abschez, represent the applicant, Stanton Gromon.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Alan Abschez, Lyra Lomennella, representing Stanton Gromon, who's the applicant for, to construct a home at 11979 Pinnacle Place. Mr. Gromon's trying?
Sergeant, would you move all these people out of here? We can't even hear what?
Mr. Gromon has been engaged in the effort to construct a home for approximately four years, in a subdivision that's virtually built out. The Planning and Land Use Management Committee has unanimously recommended the approval of the house and the grant of Mr. Gromon's appeal, finding that it was compatible with the community, and recognizing that the opposition to the house was chiefly from two neighbors who would lose views across Mr. Gromon's undeveloped lot when the house is built. Mr. Gromon previously agreed to reduce the height of the house five feet and move the house five feet towards the street. In addition, as a result of discussions with Councilman Fuer's office, Mr. Gromon has agreed to further reduce the height of the rear portion of the house two feet and move the house an additional two feet towards Pinnacle Place, as well as to settle and dismiss a lawsuit challenging the city's 1998 revision of Section 3D of the Mulholland specific plan in connection with the approval of Mr. Gromon's house. And the changes that were requested and that we've agreed to are reflected in Exhibit A1, which has been given to the Anna Vidal of the Planning Department. So we respectfully ask for your approval of the Plum Committee's recommendation and the grant of Mr. Gromon's appeal. If you please answer any questions you have.
Okay, Mr. Fuer.
Actually, I can defer to Hal, I just want to add three conditions, as Mr. Abschez just referred to, to the Plum Committee report. And just for the record, one would, yeah, these are all amendments. Increase the setback of the residence from the rear property line an additional two feet to a new revised setback of 48 feet by sliding the residence footprint forward on the lot. Two, lower the current ridge height at the rear section of the proposed residence by two feet, for a total of 134 feet. And three, the dismissal of a lawsuit known as Gromon Mortuaries, Inc. versus City of Los Angeles, as Mr. Abschez just stated. So with those three amendments, I would urge adoption of the unanimous Plum Committee report.
Yeah, I'll second his amendment and ask for unanimous vote.
We do have, somebody just brought a card in, Ms. Corin Khan, I think it is.
This is Corin Khan, appearing on behalf of Dr. Niles Chapman. We want to correct one comment that was made by applicant's representative. This is not an issue just between two homeowners. This house will have a profound impact on the, the quality of the recreational use of the adjacent parkland. We wanted to see the director's recommendation of 18 feet. We will take 10 feet, the committee will do, and the council will do what it will, but we request that the amendment be modified to 10 feet. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, you have the motion by Mr. Fuer, seconded by Mr. Burnson. Any discussion? Further discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay. Huh? Yeah, do, do we have to vote as amended, or does that cover that?
You took it as the unanimous vote, the amendment.
Yeah, okay. All right, fourth worth on that item. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items 27 and 28.
Any special by council members? 27 and 28? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, 29 through 32.
We don't have any cards, so... Anybody want to be heard on any of those items, 29 through 32? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any special by council members? 29 through 32? What you know, what item, Mr.?
On 31 and 32, there's substitute motions that are being circulated right now. I'm not sure if they've been circulated.
Why don't we hold them on the desk for the time being?
Mr. President.
29 and 32? 31 and 32?
31 and 32.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
There are several items on 28. May I ask that it be held on the desk or reconsidered, whatever your pleasure is, so that we can make the best decision on it?
Okay, well...
Whatever way you want to handle it.
Any objections to reconsideration? Seeing none, that will be the order.
Thank you.
Okay, next item.
Items, let's see, on the desk, you still have item number six, there's an amending motion.
Yes. The, huh?
We didn't vote on 29 and 30.
Okay, 29 and 30. Prepare the roll on those. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Item number six is on the desk, there's a, an amending motion.
Yes, I just, it's in my district, and I just want to say the Plum Committee concerned, had some concerns regarding the community and these issues relating to the drainage. And we've checked with the Building and Safety and the Engineering Department, and we've have some amendments, and it's in 6A, and I'd ask that we support 6A, and then adopt 6 as amended. Is there any discussion on that? Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll on 6A. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved. Now we have, now, now we have 6 as amended. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth worth on that. Next item.
Item number 14, it's submitted without recommendation.
Rule 16? Is it rule 16?
Well, no, it's, it's part of a motion, I think, Mr. 29 and 30. If I check the mic, which, what, what item it should be. Item 14, we have, we need a motion. Mr. Savarnich? Mr. Savarnich? Item 14 is in your district?
Yeah.
It's a, motion is required?
I move it.
Okay. All right, Mr. Holden's seconds. If there's any discussion, if not, prepare the roll.
Yeah.
Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth worth on that. Next item.
Item number 15, call special.
Yeah, members of the council, this, there has been a public hearing on this, but there's several people who want to be heard on this, so why don't we have a 10-minute public hearing? Maybe five minutes? No objections, so Ginny Encarto, Leonard Rude, I don't know how, who wants to be heard, Peggy Ward, Peggy, Peggy's, Peggy's never shy. Arthur Howard, Jack McGrath. Would you people get up there and speak up?
Hi, I'm Polly Ward. I am Vice President, Studio City Residence-
I am Vice President of Studio City Residents Association, and I'm the initial applicant to the Board of, to Building and Safety and to Planning and the applicant on this appeal to council. We have been fighting this problem for two years. In the press, we've been characterized as fighting something that's very popular in the community. But what we have been fighting is not whether something is popular or unpopular, but whether the laws of the city of Los Angeles are going to be enforced or not. And we're asking enforcement of the laws. We have come to the council office in the district with a proposal for a compromise. Councilman Hernandez in Plum said that no doubt they, the applicant, the appellant, the owner of the car wash sign would have received a lot less if he had done what he should have done in the first place and gone through the process. He built this illegally. He built it without a permit. He built it too tall, too close to the sidewalk. He built it too big. And we have now reached a compromise and, which I believe has been accepted by the council office and was supposedly to be accepted by the appellant. We hope that the council today will allow us to make changes that will render this car wash sign more in, not all, not totally, in alignment with the laws of the city, but more in alignment with the laws of the city. Thank you very much.
Name, please. Your name, please.
Arthur Howard. I'm Councilman Wax's appointee to the Plan Review Board. I'll read a quick statement so I won't take up too much of your time. It's improper to think that large sign in front of Studio City Car Wash is a quirky exception that should be allowed to remain, even though it disregards the regulations of the Ventura Boulevard specific plan. It's not a quirky exception, but a premeditated and purposely executed violation of the plan. It's a violation that is four hundred and forty-two percent larger than the plan permits. It is a violation that could have been prevented when the sign proposal was initially reviewed by the Planning Department, who told Mister Ferrat that an exception was required. It is a violation that's been allowed to become a cause because of inappropriate ruling by the Planning Commission. As a member of the Ventura Colanga Boulevard Specific Plan Review Board, I would like to call your attention the fact that specific plan, which was developed to regulate issues pertaining to development and traffic on Ventura Boulevard, has an...
Go ahead.
Has an extensive section on signage. New signs must conform to these regulations. This sign must conform to these regulations. Upholding the Planning Commission's unfortunate ruling and thereby allowing the sign to remain sets a precedence will make the specific plan impossible to administer and enforce. Each exception to the plan weakens it. If we are not going to follow the process that we set down, then the plan has no relevance. Building and Safety and Planning Department have no function, and any attempt by the city and individual communities to bring in an aesthetic appeal to the business districts will be overturned. It is the view of the Plan Review Board that this hand is not art but a sign. It notifies those passing by that it's a commercial enterprise, a car wash. It is a sign that is in wide violation of the plan and should not be granted an exemption. The specific plan was developed to guide development on the Boulevard to create that distinctive sense of place. You do that by developing guidelines that limit chaotic and uncontrolled signage, among other things. Allowing this sign promotes this chaos and undermines the hard work and cooperative efforts that have gone into developing a good plan for all seventeen miles of the Boulevard. These communities deserve your support, and so do the city planners and engineers who spend years working with community volunteers developing the plan. The sign must be removed. It was designed and installed without any control, input, or inspection by Building and Safety. All the city needs is another lawsuit by someone injured by a city-approved sign that no one knows anything concerning its structural integrity or lack thereof.
I'm glad that was a brief statement. The five minutes is about up. Anybody want anything different to say than has been said already?
Yes. My name is Leonard Rude with Studio City Residents Association. Mr. President, council members, when I was a lad, my mother used to enlighten me with various phrases, one of which was...
You have a good memory, don't you?
Yes, I do. She pounded this one into me, Mister President. If the shoe fits, wear it. And at this time, I'd like to read three definitions from Webster's New Collegiate Dictionary. Number one, A, anarchy, absence of government. B, a state of lawlessness or political disorder due to the absence of a governmental authority. C, a utopian society made up of individuals who have no government and who enjoy complete freedom, absence of order. Anarchism, a political theory holding all forms of governmental authority to be unnecessary and undesirable and advocating a society based on voluntary cooperation and free associations of individuals and groups. And last, anarchist, one who rebels against any authority, established order, or ruling power. I truly believe that all of you, all members of the car list, that in the situation before you, the shoe really fits. The above definitions and anything beyond the compromise that was agreed upon by Mister Ferrat, the Studio City Residents Association, and Councilman Wax's office must be denied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll make the, there are some people that are...
Excuse me?
Against the proposal, so I'm going to call on them.
I put in a card as well.
What is your name?
Jenny Encardo.
Well, I know, we've had a public hearing on this already. Allowed you to have some time, but...
I would really appreciate your courtesy and allow...
Do you have anything different to say?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm Jenny Encardo at the Studio City Residents Association Officer. I would like to thank Councilman Wax for aiding us in coming to this compromise. A lot of time and a lot of taxpayer money was spent as the councilman and his deputies devoted ample time to get this compromise finished. And I would like to ask the council to support Councilman Wax in accepting this compromise and getting this passed.
You didn't add anything on that. All right, Fred Gaines?
Thank you, Mr. President, members. My name is Fred Gaines of Gaines and Stacy. On behalf of the Studio City Hand Car Wash, this appeal is before you today from a unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission for, in favor of this exception, without conditions. Since that time, we've worked with the community groups, the council office, agreed to a set of conditions, including reducing the height, the sign area, limitations of the lighting, paying money into the street beautification fund for this area. The one issue that we ask you about today is an issue that we initially did not object to. That has to do with actually moving this sign ten feet back on the property. When we went out to bid on this, it's over twenty thousand dollars to do that. It is not, it is, it is a hardship that is unnecessary. There is no public benefit to that condition, and we ask that you look at this from a practical viewpoint. The, the issues related to the specific plan in terms of height and sign area have been separately addressed, and to impose this issue of having us pick up this sign, it's already cemented not ten feet into the ground, and move it ten feet at that kind of cost without any corresponding public benefit is unnecessary. And on that, we are here today only on that one condition and ask for your, for your support in amending that one condition so that otherwise we can go forward with this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ben Afzari?
Council members, President, my name is Ben Safiari. I represent EPCO Consultants Engineering Firm. We did structural engineering analysis on the sign. It's safe and sound, and there is no harm to public. And I would like to emphasize...
Yeah, turn your phone off.
Yes, I did. Okay. I would like to emphasize that sign is safe and there is no harm to public. And to move the sign would cost at least twenty thousand dollars and is no benefit to anybody. I would appreciate if you've denied the removal of the sign. Thank you.
Would you give your name?
My name is Ben Ferrat. I'm the owner of the Studio City Hand Car Wash. I want to thank your honors for giving me the chance, opportunity to speak. For fifteen years, we've owned this land. We've done our best trying to keep our doors open. For the last ten years, we build a car wash there. We've invested four million dollars into that land. There's tall buildings blocking the view of our sign. Our building is set back. There's a curve in the Boulevard. There's no traffic lights. We have six thousand community members petitioned and asking you, please, let the sign stay. It helped our business. We've created jobs. We've done good for the community. We're planning to do more for the community and planning to plant trees for three-block radius. Please let us keep the sign. It's really creating a hardship to, to do anything to it, it's going to create a hardship to me and my family. And I made a mistake. I put up the sign without a permit. I did not know I was breaking the law. When we bought our land, there was no laws on signs. They told us we could build a high-rise there. I took some bad advice. I put up the sign. I've done everything city officials have asked me to do. I've went through the process. I paid the fees. I'm willing to pay more fees. And the Planning Commissioners...
Rudy.
Studied this case for nine months, and they came to a unanimous decision that this sign should stay. You've given exceptions to other people on the Boulevard. You've given four different exceptions for signs. What is so different about my property? My property has more of a hardship than any of these other big properties. Please let the sign stay. I beg you. Thank you.
Michael Saint John?
Yeah, thank you for your time. I'm Michael Saint John. I'm a member of the Studio City Residents Association and three different chambers of commerce in my area. I just want to say that I personally resent the Studio City Residents Association standing against Ben Ferrat and saying that all of us disagree with the sign. Because I have many friends in the organization who approve of the sign, who like the sign. And I think that Tony Locenti is the president of the Studio City Residents Association, and he told me this is Polly Ward's personal agenda. He told me that three weeks ago. He said it's not Studio City Residents Association. It's hers.
Thank you, Mister Saint John. I don't believe we have any other cards for public comments, so now we will go into council members. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, I also want to commend Mister Wax's office for their work in working with the community. I believe that a compromise has been reached, maybe not acceptable to everybody, but I think probably in the best interest of all concerned. And I would move the committee report, which supports the compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Burnson. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Miss Akowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too just want to rise to share support for the Plum Committee action. I also did want to respond to Mister Gaines, who indicated that to comply with the law and to comply with the compromise that we offered would be a hardship. The hardship was clearly self-imposed when this person violated the law, brought, put this in, too big, too close to the Boulevard, too tall, with no permit. Those were the violations that occurred, and to now claim hardship is, I thought, was ludicrous. So I believe that the action, as recommended by Plum in the compromise of the community, who literally had every right to come forward and say, we think just absolute adherence to the law is what's called for in this case, they were willing to say, bring it in, make it shorter, make it smaller, and move it back, and still let it be larger than the law allows, was a very reasonable course on their part, and I recommend we approve the Plum Committee report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Seeing no other council members, Mister Wax, did you want to speak on this item?
Yes. I pressed my button several times, and it's my district.
It didn't record, Mister Wax. Chair recognizes Mister Wax.
Jeez, can't believe this. You know? No, Mister President, this, this issue's been, first of all, I want to urge you not to, not to entertain any amendments. A deal is a deal, and I think we've come to the end of the line on this. This has been a fascinating experience. Nothing stunned me more, members of the council. I go around this city now, as you know, every day, and you, and you listen to people and the magnitudes of the problems in this city. And then, when, when the LA Times, the Valley section of the Times, at the end of the year this year, announced which story, which story invited more comment to the Times, more letters to the editors, more email than any other story they had done for the year, it was the, it was the Studio City Hand sign. And I found that kind of amazing, that in the context of all of the issues and problems we have in our city, that that would engender the greatest amount of response of, of any issue. On the surface, that would seem ludicrous, but as you think about it, it's not ludicrous at all. It is about people caring enough and having a say on what happens in their community. And that issue is the broader issue that has been reflected in charter reform, has been reflected in the alienation that people feel in this city, of people feeling that they be able to participate in determining the quality of life in their community. In this case, to be honest, there was a split opinion. I, for one, happen to like the sign personally, as do many people. But, but, but the overriding factor is not so much whether we like it or not, is that the, the issue of obeying the law is an issue that can't be set aside lightly because one likes something or one doesn't. And if we allow that to happen, then we really break down our whole system. And I think that that is what really became the issue that drove, not a personal vendetta, but what drove the Studio City Residents and others to fight for the adherence to the law, is that we are a society of laws and we have to obey them. Fortunately, all the people came together, and nobody's happy with this compromise, but we have come to a point where there really has been a give and take on this. And in that sense, the rule of law is being upheld because the rule of law contemplates that kind of a coming together, and the community has really had its say. And the fact that everyone may not be completely happy isn't as important as everyone had a chance to participate, everyone had their say. We've come to the, to this point now where we have this agreement, and I would ask you to, to adopt it as is, and I would thank the people for the amazing amount of time and effort they have spent on both sides in bringing us to this point, and then let us learn from this.
Item fifteen, before us, prepare the roll. Tabulate to vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith on that. Next item.
Item number twenty, A and B, item twenty-B has an amending motion.
Okay, item twenty, we have an amending motion.
Excuse me, Mister President, twenty-B is a substitute motion.
Twenty-B is a substitute motion. Okay, we have twenty-A, twenty-B, a substitute, amending motion. Any discussion on that? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate to vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Item number twenty-eight called special by Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
Mister Ridley Thomas?
Mister President, members of the council, there were some concerns that were raised with respect to the work plan. The balance of those issues are being resolved. There are motions that are to be considered, and I suspect if we can get a clarified sense of what the work plan, those motions can either be adopted or referred to committee as deemed appropriate. But this notion of the undercount with respect to the census is of critical importance to the city of Los Angeles. Members, many of you will recall that there was an undercount in nineteen ninety that precipitated a lawsuit in which this city participated for the express purpose of saying to the federal government that we will not stand by and allow ourselves to be disadvantaged by the lack of resources owing to an ineffective census count in the city of Los Angeles. And so, when the language of census is mentioned, it gets the attention of quite a number of us. And today, it seems to me that we ought to have a clear sense of what the work plan is, and if members are comfortable with that, we can proceed. If there are amendments that need to be entertained, if they need to be taken up in committee, so be it. But I think an aggressive pursuit to make sure that everyone is counted, particularly in those areas that are specifically identified as those having been undercounted, is of critical importance.
Okay, Mister Hernandez?
Members of the council, we took an action last year where basically we dedicated some block wrap by... block grant money for purposes of the undercount and the outreach. And that created a special, basically a position within the mayor's office that worked with CDD to start developing a plan. And then the state of California took an action that basically provide to the county of Los Angeles, as well as the city of Los Angeles through that provision, some additional funding to the tune of about $700,000 for an outreach plan. And I think it's because the city, as well as the state, recognize the importance of an accurate count. And when you talk about who is not being counted, who are the people responsible for that undercount, they tend to be those individuals that many of us don't want to recognize are there. The reality is, it's the homeless. The reality is the immigrant community. It's a, how do you reach those 2,000 people that go to the midnight mission just to eat their meals, but might not have a place to sleep at night? And so, the outreach plan is basically dealing with those, that population base. How do you go to the encampments and count? How do you go to the alleys and count? How do you talk to populations who are intimidated in communities because of the INS? And how do you deal with people who are dealing with drug abuse and alcohol abuse and basically have been trying to hide from society? Now, I kind of share that because that is part of what this is basically about. It's not something that you can pick up a phone and call and say how many people are in that household. It's not something that you can mail a questionnaire to and have them receive and fill out and mail back. That is going to be the majority of our population that will be counted. They will respond to phone banks, they will be responding to the letters, they will be home when someone knocks on their door. So what this outreach program is, basically those individuals who are not in a home, those individuals who don't trust government, and those individuals who traditionally didn't want to be seen. And so with that, I'd like staff to present to you what the plan is and how important it is. Each one of us might have different ideas on how to accomplish the most accurate count possible. The reality is, hopefully, we've been having that dialogue with our staff to try and accomplish that task. It's a humongous task, and what it means is basically direct funding to the city, not only in terms of housing and homeless and block grant, but in terms of how the federal government looks at the needs of the city of Los Angeles when it's providing its programming. And so with that, maybe, Jan, you can make a presentation what the program's going to be about. And I think it's important that all of us understand this outreach program because it impacts each and every one of our districts.
My name is Jan Perry, and I'm the executive director of the Census 2000 Outreach Program for the city of Los Angeles. And joining me today, on my right, is Jesse Hines, who has worked on the census issue for the last 12 years on behalf of the Office of the City Attorney, Kathy Godfrey, who is our senior project coordinator, David Horano from CAO's office, and Dennis Moody here on behalf of ITA. The purpose of our plan before you today is to count the hardest-to-count populations throughout our city. We developed this plan in a collaborative fashion with representatives of elected officials, members of the City of Los Angeles Complete Count Committee, community-based organizations, social service providers, and homeless outreach providers, as well as input from the state of California and the county of Los Angeles, in conformance with guidelines as set forth by Governor Davis and the state Complete Count Committee. Since the inception of this project in 1998, we have focused on outreach, and in some instances, your council staff representatives have attended many of our board meetings, have offered input, asked questions, and taken materials for distribution to your constituents. We have endeavored to include as many people as possible in our board meetings, and committee notices have always been faxed and mailed to all offices of elected officials. Meeting notices have been posted on our website, and participation in the committee has always been an open process. In addition, we've held training and information census, census training and information for city employees, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with that. Our plan today was presented to those present at a board meeting for the Complete Count Committee last month. A verbal motion was made. Those present voted in accordance with state requirements to accept the state money and move the plan forward for your consideration and review, so that requisite legislative actions by the city council could occur to allocate the money as indicated in our proposed plan. The state has five requirements, two counties to allow cities to establish eligibility to receive funds for census outreach, and our city plan meets those requirements as follows, and I will ask the city attorney to delineate what the requirements are for you right now.
Okay. In general, the money that the state has appropriated to counties and then to cities requires that the funds be used to serve the hardest-to-reach undercounted populations. This is not a general census outreach plan, and we must certify that we are not duplicating the efforts that the Census Bureau is doing for its general outreach activities. The plan that is submitted will be subject to audit by both the state and the county, and the city needs to identify the targeted areas of high non-response rate and persons who are likely not to respond to the census as the consumers that we are attempting to reach.
Okay. The state guidelines require that we have the, an established complete count committee, which the city has had since 1998 with more than 14 board meetings in the last year and a half. The city has been involved in outreach with the state and county. We have developed materials for outreach in addition to census materials that are not duplicative and have been shared with the county for distribution to hard-to-count populations. The city itself has facilitated more than 55 outreach events throughout the city to historically undercounted populations, and has partnered with community-based organizations, the Census Bureau, neighborhood groups, to extend its outreach more aggressively. The CDD department is our fiduciary agent, and funds allocated through the county from the state must be distributed through this department. The mainstay of our plan is to establish a questionnaire assistance center in every housing development in the city. For the last year, our staff has worked very closely with the housing authority to develop a strategy and to train residents so that they can assist those in need on the census form and to assist in running the QAC within the housing development. The state funds would be used to pay those individuals to work in the QACs and to provide materials to support their activities. The ethnic diversity in the housing developments is significant, and it has provided us with an excellent opportunity to make sure that all residents have the chance to apply for jobs and to respond to the census form. Last year, we conducted a homeless street count as a demonstration project in six census tracts throughout the city. That included Chinatown, Pico Union, San Fernando Valley, Venice, and parts of South Los Angeles, and we used experienced homeless outreach teams, including homeless healthcare, homeless outreach projects, Saint Joseph's, Family Services, and prototypes to help enumerate on the street count. And we provided people who were living on the street with incentives to induce them to respond to the forms that were patterned after an actual census form. And it was 50 degrees that evening, and we worked from sundown to midnight and counted well over 200 people in just those six census tracts. We also asked the Census Bureau to participate with us and observe, which they did, in an attempt to get the Census Bureau to change certain methodologies to make sure that we got a more effective street count this time around. All that we learned was shared that evening with the Bureau, and we have learned that we would like to hire and train up to 300 homeless outreach workers to advance the census enumerators with homeless populations in shelters and place an even greater emphasis on street encampments. And we are still in discussions with the Bureau to determine whether trained and paid ambassadors or special escorts will be able to accompany the enumerators into encampments that would otherwise be missed by temporary census enumerators who are not as experienced in reaching out to high-risk encampments. We would also like to purchase incentives to support the homeless street enumeration. The other mainstay of our plan is mobile questionnaire assistance centers. We have negotiated an agreement with an automotive manufacturer to receive up to 10 vehicles for approximately three weeks to deploy throughout our city to provide assistance where needed. Letters have been sent to each council office asking you for locations that you want included in our mobile outreach strategies. We hope to be able to hire individuals with language skills and other special skills to accompany us in our mobile questionnaire assistance centers to ensure that we do the most comprehensive outreach possible. Okay, anything else? That's, okay.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Wax, you want to be heard on this? Anybody else want to be heard on this item? Ms. Galanter.
I would just like to urge that in working with any of the community-based organizations, that you'll remember this, Jan, from the meeting in our office, one of the questions we found coming up as a reason people gave for why they didn't want to fill out questionnaires is that they were very unhappy about the government inquiring about some of the things that are asked about the housing units. And they wanted to know, you know, what business is it of the government, how many bathrooms there are in my house? And I was able to explain, and I think that, but we've tried this out, we've tested this on higher-level people in the census operation, and they don't know the answer either. But I, it just so happens that when I was in graduate school, I had to look things up in the housing census. So I was the only one in the room who knew that the housing data is collected at the same time, because it's easier to collect it at the same time than to go back, but it's used for a completely different tally than the people tally. And I think there probably are other questions like that that make people nervous. You know, they don't want to fill it out, they want to know, they think it's too invasive for the government to know all these things. So it seems to me it's really important, if we're going to have a better response rate, that we improve beyond what the census has been able to do, the ability of our folks and their friends to explain the purpose of all of this, because we really do have to get this count. And it would help us a lot, actually, to have an accurate housing census as well, so that we could really document how many people are living in places with no bathrooms and how many people are living in 10,000-square-foot houses per person. And we would have a much better thing, but I, people don't understand, most people have no reason to go read the housing census. There's also an occupation tally and a whole bunch of other things they do separate from how old we are and how many people are in the family and where do we live. And it's really important to try to make people comfortable with that.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. Makosker, you're familiar, the city attorney's office is familiar with this plan as presented, and what's your opinion and what should we do, what you're recommending? All right, will you hold my time while he answers, Mr. President, please? Oh, you don't want to? Okay.
President, members of the council, the city attorney's office has recommended and continues to recommend that the plan as presented to the committee, as voted on by the committee, would be the plan that the council would adopt. It is a plan which conforms with the requirements on the money and one which meets the objectives for the council and for the city.
Mr. President, members, Mr. Thomas, you were aware of some amendments which I don't see, and you said they should be referred to committees, is that your opinion? Okay, Mr. President, with that, I don't know if there's a motion in order, but I move that we adopt the committee report and that the amendments as presented should be referred to committee.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez.
And members of the council, again, what I wanted to urge is that we make sure we're working with our staff, whose job it is to do the count, and that we allow them to put together the collaborates as well as the community-based groups that have to do the work. You know, it's really strange because we have a general population that has to be educated as to the importance of the census, and then we have a population base that basically we have to go out and count them. And how that gets accomplished is not as easy task as we might think. I found out, for example, that when we're talking about enumerators and people who were going to be part of the staff out there counting, when we're talking about working with individuals who work with the homeless community, the reality is they have to be fingerprinted and FBI-approved. And then that became somewhat of an obstacle just trying to find people. And so, again, I think it's important that we allow staff to implement the plan and that we have the confidence that we have to work through staff and ask staff to work with us, because we're the ones who are basically working with the organizations who are trying to deal with the needs of a community, and hopefully that we can put those collaborations together and come out with the most accurate count the city has had, because I think we've all found out how important that data is to us in us trying to deal with the issues of a city.
Okay, we have item, what number is it?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight before us, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number thirty-one, call special by councilmember Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez, you call thirty-one special?
I just, there were several amendments that were being circulated. I guess they're thirty-one A, B, and C, or thirty-one A and B, and I just asked that the motions be approved of the amendments.
Okay, any discussion? All right, prepare the roll on A and B, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
An addition for this, a motion to be introduced. C.
Where is it?
Twenty-eight C. Here. Where is it, Rodney? Thirty-one C. Yes, hold it on the desk, please.
Okay, well, we'll come back to that.
Next, next item.
Item number thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Call special, there's an amending motion by councilmember Pacheco.
Okay, item thirty-two, Mr. Pacheco.
Just asked to move approval as amended by thirty-two B.
Any discussion on that? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved, as amended. Next item.
Mr. President, there's a special one motion, not on the agenda. It's presented by councilmember Galanter and seconded by councilmember Swornich. The city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Okay, Ms. Weingard.
Thank you, Mr. President. January 2000, the DWP Board authorized the Department of Water and Power to issue $70 million in variable-rate bonds. During the solicitation process, it was determined that the DWP can save approximately $4 million if it redeems these bonds otherwise not targeted. The board voted yesterday to allow the redemption of the bonds. The council would need to make the findings that there's an immediate need to act, and the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda. And I might say that the, that I understand that the immediate need to act is based on the fluctuation of the market.
Okay, prepare the roll on the findings, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. The special one is before us, is any discussion on this? Ms. Weingard just explained it. Ms. Galanter, you want to explain this for Mr. Wax?
In essence, this is a friendly Prop. 5, similar to a number of previous motions that we've done. The need to move swiftly is because the, we're trying to take advantage of the interest rates by refinancing previous things.
Okay, then we have special one before us, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Next item.
Mr. President, you have a special meeting, do you wish to recess?
Yeah, Ms. Waller, do you have your motion yet?
Yes, it should be distributed on the desk now, thirty-one B, thirty-one C.
Okay, would you-
There's an A, B, and C.
Would you explain it?
Rodney, has this been distributed?
Thirty-one C. Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Walters.
The motion is similar to the other motions that are on here, and it's an item that will allocate money from the CRA, special revenue, unappropriated balance to be utilized to assist us in a community market in an area where markets do not, regular markets are not serving the public.
Okay.
It's for our, to assist the Esperanza Community Housing Corp. in the completion of their mercado.
Okay, we have thirty-one A, B, and C, prepare the roll on those.
How much is thirty-one C?
How much is thirty-one C requesting? I just, because I was working with everybody on A and B, and I just, Ms. Walters kind of came in on her own, so, Ms. Walters, how much are you requesting on the thirty-one C?
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Okay, prepare the roll on those. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, this is a series of motions that are proposed. Now, this, is this a run on those special revenue funds that we had designated for consideration? A is CD fourteen, B is what?
CD four.
CD four, and C is CD nine?
I guess let's really top, none of it is CD eight or CD one.
No, this is not CD eight, it's not CD six, it's not CD ten, the whole Crenshaw quarter that helped to generate the resources, let the record reflect.
Okay, if I could have?
Okay, Mr. Pacheco?
I was just going to ask that be sent to committee at this point, since it was just dropped on our lap at the last minute here and not worked through committee.
Well, the, Mr. Hernandez, the second some of them.
Yeah, and, Mr. President, members of the council, what I, again, have to remind everybody, what happened in this motion, and I want to give credit to Mr. Pacheco's office in working with CRA and so forth, we basically forced CRA to share with us what were some of the block grant discretionary funds that weren't being used and that weren't part of the plan. The projects that were introduced through motion A and B were part of the list of projects that are going to be ready to be funded. Now, all these monies, so that everybody understands, are going to be reviewed as part of our hundred-and-twenty-day review process, because the intent is for us to use the money. And so those projects that are ready to move, and so, for example, I was very much aware of El Portal's status, because that project is already moving, and this was the gap they needed to complete. And that's why I didn't have any problem with seconding it. So I'm just saying that the reality is they're all going to come back, if the projects are moving, the money's going to be spent. If the projects are not ready to move, it's not going to be spent. Now, the reason I don't have a real problem with this particular chunk is there's really much more money out there that we're identifying, that has been held in accounts for years for projects that aren't moving. And I'm just trying to make everybody aware of it, because the intent is to spend the money and get these projects moving. So I know that the projects in CD fifteen were ready to move. Again, these discretionary funds came to our attention because of the way it was being handled. And again, as long as Ms. Walters' project is ready to move, it's going to be in that category. But that applies to any projects Mr. Ridley Thomas might have, anybody else has, and we're going to be reviewing that in the process.
Mr. President, I was on my time, that's all. Okay. The other very important point about thirty-one A and thirty-two A is that we were basically trying to meet the MTA deadlines for those projects, and there's a whole list of other projects, MTA projects, as well as the ones identified in thirty-one B and C. So at this point, my recommendation is to, let's play it straight and conservative at this point, get thirty-one A and thirty-two A approved. And as far as my review for the record, because someone raised it earlier, these are not in my district, these are in CD fifteen. But we have a time sensitive issue with MTA, so I want to get that done, so we don't lose our funding from MTA. Thirty-one B and C should go back to committee.
And that would be, I would second that motion by Mr. Pacheco.
Send, B and C to committee? B and C to committee? There's no objection, that'll, Mr. Hernan, Mr. Mrs. Walters has the floor next.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask CRA staff to come to the table, please.
Are they here?
Yes, Mr. Spivak is here. Mr. Spivak, to, one, would you explain what this source of funds is, and would you tell us how much money is in the account, please?
Yes, thank you. Don Spivak from the Community Redevelopment Agency. The source of the funds are Community Redevelopment Agency's special revenue funds, which originally, several years ago, were primarily the proceeds of the Central Library transaction in downtown Los Angeles.
And that's in CD nine, right?
That's correct. The funds that are in this particular amount are the funds that were originally allocated from that to assist in the acquisition and development of the Crenshaw Baldwin Hills Plaza. The funds were deposited with the Superior Court for acquisition purposes, or there were a number of eminent domain cases. There is, at this point, a little under three-point-six million dollars of principal and interest that is being, or being refunded by the Superior Court from the balance of funds that were originally deposited.
All right, thank you. And would you also tell me, I've put in a motion for the El Mercado La Paloma, the Esperanza Community Housing Corporation's public market, would you tell me the status of that project, please?
I'm sorry, I don't know, I don't know the specific status of it. I know the project is underway, it's, it's an important project, and I believe we are working on a funding package for that.
And you are involved in working for this, to bring this market to fruition?
That's correct, Councilmember.
And it's, the land is there, and they're going along with it?
It is, it is underway.
It is underway?
Yes.
Fine, thank you very much. This is a project in my district, CD nine, part of these funds, part of the three million, what was that number again?
Approximately three-point-six million.
Three-point-six million was generated out of CD nine, is a great deal of the housing money and other monies that are spent in your districts. This is a project that is ready to go, it's in CD nine, and CD nine is entitled to utilize these funds.
Yeah, well, we, I'm, thirty-one B is in my district, and I'm willing to send it to committee, so, Mr. Ridley Thomas, do you want to be heard?
Yes, I do, Mr. President, and I thank you. I'm not prepared to challenge the worthiness of any of the projects that are being proposed. However, there is some concern and debate as to the source that generated the resources in the first instance. I think the CRA, the CAO, the CLA owes it to the council to explain the source of the funds and, in fact, how much we are talking about in the first place. In addition to that, I think there ought to be a process, these are CRA special revenue funds, I think there ought to be a process by which council members can clearly understand that they can request the resources, rather than a spate of motions that essentially take advantage of a pool of resources that may or may not ultimately be there. These are specifically stated allocations. And someone saying that there's only, trying to make a placeholder, for the lack of a better term, I don't know that that's the case. Mr. President, members of the council, once again, I'm not interested in challenging the worthiness of any of the projects. I am prepared to say that four motions that amount to nearly a million dollars, where there is a limited amount of money in the first place, ought to go to committee, so that we can make sure that this is being properly and fairly processed, and I would so move.
We have that motion already, I think. Mr. Pacheco?
I was just going to assist Councilmember Ridley Thomas and, or hopefully ease some concern that we originally came with a different line item as a placeholder. There was some concerns by Councilmember Hernandez as the original line item being the placeholder, so we moved it to this line item of revenue as a placeholder. I want to assure Mr. Ridley Thomas that it is every, is very much our intention to be a placeholder at this time for thirty-one A and thirty-one, and thirty-two A, because of the fact that they are related to the MTA funding. So in terms of thirty-one B and thirty-one C, I definitely agree with Mr. Ridley Thomas that at this point, we have a process to discuss the merits, and it's not on the floor. We usually do it through committee and have a full hearing, and I would agree, once again, that we should go, send thirty-one B and thirty-one C to committee and approve thirty-one A and thirty-two A at this point, for the purpose of securing our funds from MTA. We don't want to miss that deadline and lose that funding.
Mr. Fear? Mr. Fear moves the previous question.
Okay. On thirty-five A passing and B and C being sent to committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. B and C, prepare the roll on sending those to committee. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That's approved. Now we have thirty-one, as amended by thirty-
Is thirty-one A a substitute?
It's a substitute, so prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved, forthwith on that. Next item?
Mr. President, you have a special meeting, do you wish to recess the regular meeting?
Yes. We'll recess the regular council meeting, and we'll call a roll for the special meeting.
Brinson, Jake, Fear, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Badi, Ridley Thomas, Swornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, fifteen members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, the first order of business?
Special meeting is item for which public hearing has been held, it's a Community and Economic Development Committee report.
Okay, we have a lot of people who want to be heard here, and I don't think we want to listen to all of them, because we'll be here until tomorrow. So do you have some spokespersons that want to be primarily, would you just take the microphone? We'll give you ten minutes, but.
Thank you.
What is your name, please?
My name is Deanna Stevenson. I stand here in support of a resolution, a SEDAW resolution, that Councilwoman Jackie Goldberg has brought forward. You all have passed the resolution as a commendatory resolution. I stand here in behalf of fifty organizations and growing in support of this resolution. I know that Councilwoman Goldberg will be bringing it before you again on Wednesday or Friday of next week. I hope that we will see all of you in support, and I'd like to recognize the many people who have stayed for at least an hour, so that we would have our moment in the sun before you today. Would you all rise, please?
This is, this is a bad day for the sun.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else want to be heard?
Just very quickly, hi, my name is Eric Garcetti, and I'm here on behalf of Human Rights Watch, part of this coalition that was just referred to. First of all, let me wish you Happy International Women's Day, I'm sure you all know that it is, but it's very appropriate that we have a chance to speak briefly. I just wanted to read a quote to you, I think it's very important, and I commend all of the members of the council who have voted on this as a commendatory resolution, but I think it's very important as well to make sure that this has real teeth to it, and that we don't just say that we are for women's rights and for gender equality, but that we make sure that we implement that beyond rhetoric. For all of you who thinks that human rights is something that usually happens over there out of this country, I always remind my students of a quote that Eleanor Roosevelt said, which is, "Where, after all, do universal human rights begins? In small places, close to home, so close and so small that they cannot be seen on any maps of the world, yet they are the world of the individual person, the neighborhood he lives in, in the school, the college he attends, the factory, the farm, or office where he works. Such are the places where every man, woman, and child seeks equal justice, equal opportunity, equal dignity, without discrimination." It is incumbent upon us to make sure that our words actually come into actions, and that we do more than saying that these are ideals, but these are actually principles by which we live our lives. Thank you for your support, we look forward to the implementation of this as well, and a meeting with each of you on an individual basis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Vogel?
I believe Ms. Vogel had to leave.
Okay.
You have a card there for me, my name is Billy Heller.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
It's really a special pleasure to be here, and I really wanted to be able to say this, because it's International Women's Day. And I wanted to call the council's attention that my role is Chair and co-founder of the National Committee on the United Nations Convention on the Elimination of Discrimination Against Women. The convention, which is more popularly known for obvious reasons by the acronym SEDAW, is the major human rights treaty in the world for women and girls. And our organization had its inception here, and that's what I wanted to call to your attention. Two local men, Paul Hoffman and Sandy Elster, who may be known to some of you, arranged a luncheon for us. Some eighty of us came back from Nairobi, Kenya, in nineteen eighty-five, and from that luncheon, our committee was organized, as I say, it's a Los Angeles entity. Within six months, we became national. And I just wanted to, an opportunity to thank the people who arranged this to happen. I particularly want to thank Paul Petrata and the staff of the Los Angeles City Commission on the Status of Women, and City Attorney James Hahn and his staff for their efforts in organizing an opportunity to do this, to City Councilwoman Jackie Goldberg, and congratulations, and her staff for the preparation and introduction of this resolution, and you, the members of the Los Angeles City Council, for your time and consideration of it on this very appropriate day, and I didn't want to let that opportunity go by. Thank you very much, probably see you next Wednesday.
Thank you, ma'am. May we have our next speaker?
Yes. I'm Doris Whitrigg, from the American Association of University Women. I represent three thousand women in twenty-seven branches in Los Angeles County. And in nineteen eighty-five, I was one of those who went to the Fourth World Women's Conference in Nairobi. We came back, all the countries said that they would go to their countries and have it ratified, that there would be no discrimination against women. To this date, a hundred and sixty-four countries have ratified, Iran, Iraq, Algeria, and the United States have not ratified this. And we're really chagrined at this when we go to world conferences, they point us up as saying, "We're the biggest, most powerful nation in the world, but we won't give our women equal rights."
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who has filled out a speaker card that would like to address the council at this time?
Hi, my name is Beth Lersh, and I'm here on behalf of the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom. Good morning, it's very pleasing to be here on International Women's Day. And I'm the co-chair of the organization, which was founded in nineteen fifteen by Jane Adams and Company, who wanted not only the right to vote, but believed in the possibility of a peace, just, and equal world that recognizes women as individuals. With branches in forty-two countries, we still believe, and our conviction only strengthens. Over the past few years, we've been celebrating International Women's Day seemingly alone, but last year we saw an explosion of celebrations around this city, and this year, it has increased dramatically. So I encourage you to support the implementation of SEDAW, and join us in making history, and being one of the first cities in this country to take the lead and implement this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We would like to acknowledge all of the other ladies who joined us this morning. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
I just want to publicly acknowledge that unfortunately, we made a mistake, and we're not clear when we put the resolution in that was supposed to be heard today, that it was a resolution for action, and so it got pulled in on March the first as a commendation. And since it was done on March the first, we can't reconsider it today, so that's why we just reintroduced it this morning for next week. And I apologize to all of you who assembled, we had hoped to time this perfectly for International Women's Day, but unfortunately, there was a small technical glitch that turns out to make it not possible for us to do that, which does not undermine for one minute the importance of it, in fact, just the opposite, we're going to hear it twice now. And so we'll see many of you, if not all of you, next Wednesday, and I do hope at that time we'll have an opportunity to discuss it a little further.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The public comment period is closed, we are now on special item number one, colleagues, for the special council meeting. Is there any council member that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on special agenda item number one and tabulate the vote?
Fifteen ayes.
That item is approved, forthwith. Are there any other agenda items on the special council agenda meeting?
No, Mr. President.
Okay, well, let us adjourn the special meeting, and let us go back into the regular council session. Next item?
Item number twenty-five A is listed in closed session, however, the City Attorney has advised that can be held an open session and then go into closed session.
Okay, we have number twenty-five A before us. I see two speakers on the council would like to be recognized. Why don't we have City Attorney come forward and take their place at the center table, in case there are any questions of any council members? Okay. Colleagues, would you push your speakers' buttons again? It has been erased from the queue. There was another council member that wanted to speak on this. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the matter that the council had a briefing on last week involving a contract that the city had entered into to fulfill all these points raised in the settlement agreement on Grobison in terms of an outside consultant to assist the city in providing information about sexual and gender discrimination and harassment issues in the city in terms of employees across the board. At the time the city attorney presented it to us, they had some concerns about both the deadline on the contract, how the contract was being implemented, and those concerns really turned out to be questions. The council, as you may recall, suggested that there be an effort and some dialogue that would be conducted with the city attorney, with the contractors, and under the auspices of Councilmember Goldberg and myself. And I think we are here with the city attorney report, but I think we did have a very productive meeting with Councilmember Goldberg, myself, and the contractors who are charged with providing us with this information. A lot of clarification occurred between questions that the city attorney had, as well as some of the departments, about how the process would continue. And I think we arrived at a rather satisfactory agreement among all parties. And I would like to turn it over now to the city attorney to indicate how it is that we will proceed at this point.
Cecil Moore, on behalf of the city attorney's office. Blythe Smith is on my left. Carmel Sala is also available, and as is Lori Rittenberg, who is representing the city in ancillary action involving this matter. Commander Betty Calipaz is here for the police department, and Susan Harbach, the contract administrator, is also available. In meetings held both Thursday and yesterday, council members Goldberg and Misakowski and their staff facilitated a resolution of many of the issues raised in our report last week. That resolution involves mutual understandings, which are not inconsistent with the contract, so that no contract reformation is needed. In a report of March 7th, filed yesterday, on March 7th, we documented those understandings. In our discussions, the contractor indicated that they would need approximately another six weeks to complete their draft report, which would be due on June 15th. I'm informed by Susan Harbach this morning, the contract administrator, that there's no need to reform the contract or change the contract to accommodate that date. And there's no need for council action with respect to that date. As I indicated, we filed a report which lists our understanding. Unless there are any questions on that report, I would turn it back to the council members.
All right, I don't see any questions. Does anyone have any questions? So why don't you just state very concisely what it is you want the council to do here?
We were just reporting back, there's no need for action this morning.
Splendid. In that case, we'll thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right, next item?
Madam President, you have other closed session items. However, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yes, please.
You have motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, those are approved?
Councilmember Sornich requests to be excused Friday, March 17th, to leave council at 11:00 a.m. Personal business.
I guess we can let him do that. You're welcome. We'll send you a bill in the morning.
That clears the desk for closed session.
All right. We are now going to go... Wait a second. We need to go into closed session, yes. That's what I thought you said. All right. We're now going to go into closed session on the closed session items. If you are not involved in the closed session, please exit efficiently. Okay, we're back in session, and we have before us item 24...
24B.
B, which is the case of Anthony Escobar et al. versus May Company Department Stores'
settlement in the amount of $300,000 for the city to accept that amount.
Yes, let's make clear that this is $300,000 coming in, not going out. We had a motion earlier, Ms. Misakowski, I think, moved, and Mr. Burnson seconded. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. And forthwith, and let's go to 24C.
24C is settlement in the amount of $800,000 in the case of Cabral versus City of Los Angeles.
And that, alas, is $800,000 going out. We had a motion on that one, too. I've forgotten who moved that one. Mr. Burnson moved that one. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith on that, too. That, I believe, does it.
The discus clear, Madam President?
All right. Do we have any adjourning motions? Yes, we do.
Will everybody please rise for adjourning motions?
Mrs. Chick? Yes, I very sadly ask that we adjourn in memory of a 13-year-old girl who was an eighth-grade student. Her name is Vanessa Escobida. She was a student at Sherman Oaks Center for Enrich Studies, a school in the West San Fernando Valley, and passed away yesterday after collapsing during lunch period. The cause of death is unknown. And also, unfortunately, this tragedy occurred on the school campus. LAUSD is sending a crisis team in to work with the young people who were there. And our thoughts and prayers and love go out to her parents and her family in front.
Also with the teachers, I hope.
And to the teachers, yes. The crisis response, yes.
Mr. Holden?
Madam President, members of the council, sad to announce that we adjourn in memory of Marilyn Woods, who died March 3rd. She lost the battle with the cancer. This happens much too often. She was very active in the community through the J-Bock Block Club Association. And the funeral service will be held on Friday, but she truly was an activist in the community. And she had a lot of information with my office that caused us to go out and make it a lot better. So we're going to miss her.
Thank you. Anybody else? Call the roll? Thank you, the council is adjourned.